Anderson, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To you, my fellow, for which nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so, welcome everyone. And we've got Terry McCloskey phoning in with us here today. So we do have all five board members on record, four of them here and one offsite. And next, we have Administrator Report on Agenda Posting and Notification of the Meeting to the Media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School, and the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes, and the town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. And it was also notified via email to Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
Very good, thank you for that. Next, we go to Amendments and Approval of Agenda.
I do have an amendment.
Okay.
We will be able to take off the closed executive session this evening as I have no new business to discuss.
Okay, so number six is out. Okay, so with that information, I'll seek a motion for approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Terry, second by Stacy. Any other questions? Hearing none, a call to vote, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion passes 5-0. Next, we go to approving minutes of the July 20th, 2022 Regular Meeting and the August 11th, 2022 Board Administration Staff Planning Retreat. I can seek motion for approval on both, on one motion or singular.
I'll make the motion to approve the 7:20, 22 Regular Meeting Minutes and the 8:11, 22 Planning Retreat Minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Josh, second by Stacy. I have one clarification on... All I gotta do is find it here. Okay. On the minutes for July 20th. If we go about half down the first page, maybe two-thirds the way. The next regular meeting is scheduled for April, or to meet August 17th, 2022 at 6:00 PM. Board Administrative Staff Retreat is scheduled for 8:11, 22 at 9:00 AM. This is recorded incorrectly in the 3:16, now I would assume that'd be 22 minutes. So, that was the one little minor that I saw.
Well, I apologize if I had a question I had gone to. The Professional Development Day in Rhinelander, is that really 10/9 or is that 10/10? Because I think 10/9 is a Sunday.
Oh, I believe it is 10/10. Let me look right now. Yep, it wouldn't be 10/10, 10/9, it is 10/10. And that's the all-area Professional Development Day, so we should correct that. Good catch.
So if you're okay with those two changes, Josh?
I am, I can remotion if you'd like.
All right, if you would.
Okay, I will, I will make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes with the two changes presented and the 8:11, 22 Planning Retreat Minutes as presented.
Second.
All right. Okay, so motion again by Josh, second by Stacy. Any other questions, comments, considerations? Hearing none, we'll call to vote, all those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed? None heard, motion passes 5-0. All right, very good, thank you. And we now move to approving the voucher slash check register for the period of July 15th, 2022 through August 11th, 2022.
I'll make the motion to approve checks dated July 15th, 2022 through August 11th, 2022 for accounts payable, regular checks number 126775 through 126838, and manual checks **0 and number 5339 through 5350 in the amount of $393,469.50. And ACH payroll checks number 900038227 through 900038330, and manual checks number 1620 through 1677 in the amount of $153,409.99 for a total amount of $546,879.49.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Terry. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard, motion passes 5-0. All right, so next we go to the public comments section. If any visitors would like to speak regarding agenda items, if so, we have a two-minute timeframe that we ask you to fit your comments into. Would anybody like to comment on tonight's, any of tonight's agenda items? All right, moving on to number four Administrator's Report. Terry?
Um, I don't have a separate Administrator's Report tonight because our business will be covered under new business.
Okay, all right. Being efficient, aren't you?
Yes, I am trying.
All right, new business, September meeting dates.
Okay, our regular board meeting will be Wednesday, September 21st, and a reminder that our annual meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 28th.
Okay, so no changes pre-scheduled?
No, no changes.
Okay. All right. Okay, and next we're going to be consider approval of moving October regular meeting date to October 26th, 2022.
Very good. I do have a conflict. I would like to attend the Wisconsin Rural Education Conference, which is scheduled for the 19th. So I have asked your consideration to move our October meeting to October 26th.
All right, I'll seek a motion for that change.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Terry, second by Michelle. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll call to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? None heard, motion passes 5-0. There you go.
Thank you.
We'll wait for your return.
All right.
How's that?
Sounds great.
Next, we go to consider approval of the Personnel Report.
This evening I have resignations to report. Resignations include Cindy DeHan, paraprofessional, David Ditzler, from National Honor Society Advisor, and Tony Lorbetsky, softball coach, and Jason Portelli, boys' junior high basketball coach. And I'd like to thank them for their service to the district. Our hirings include a Nate Coach for Assistant Cross Country Coach, Justin Zeus, Football Program Assistant, and Terry Crowe as Student Council Co-Advisor. And I appreciate these folks stepping up and helping out.
Absolutely. There you go. Okay, thank you for that report. And next, we have review and set milk prices for 2022 through 2023.
Okay, we had done some research and studying, gone out to bids on our milk prices, and we try to keep it very close to breaking even. It's not meant to be a moneymaker, but milk prices, as I know, have gone up a lot. We have come up with the plan for our school day milk program that we would need to increase our prices to 40 cents a carton. And this was done after all the calculations. You can see that Kerry pulled together how much milk we use. It's quite astonishing when you realize total milk is 75,944 pints. That's a lot of milk.
Yeah.
And our costs there, the average, are listed out for you. You can include a small fee for administrative costs. We try to keep this extremely small. It's with a penny or two. It's not, like I said, I'm meant to go ahead and make money on this, but we do need to try to stay out of the red because of the cost of the prices. We would have to expect quite a deficiency if we don't. So my recommendation would be, as listed on the bottom of your document, to approve an increase.
All right, anyone prepared to make a motion in that regard?
I'll make a motion to approve the price increase to milk as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any other questions?
So Terry, there's no, there's no chocolate 2% this year? It's just the 1%, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. If that covers the questions, I'll call to vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, opposed? None heard, motion passes 5-0. Okay. Uh, next, we have consider resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $4,250,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. All right, Terry, you want to lead us on that?
Yep, I'm going to start us off, and then I'm going to ask Caleb to help assist with us. We've been looking at this since Caleb joined almost immediately. I asked him to get on this task. And we've really worked hard at what we need to do to sustain the level of programming that we're at and anticipate the costs where, as we know, everything has increased. He has gone ahead and done the projections out for us, and we have come to, first we thought we were going to have to go higher, but we are able to come in with a proposal of 4.25 million per year for the next five years. And I want to make it, you know, very clear that this is to maintain what we are doing with program services and maintaining the buildings. It's not extra big projects, it's not huge capital projects. It is to sustain what we have and not be cutting the things that we feel so valuable within the district. So that's where I'm going to start it off. And then I would like for us, first of all, to look at the projections that Caleb has put together for five years out as compared to the past five years, and looking forward and talk through the charts and graphs.
Yep, sure, so we can just go through that packet that I put together?
That would be great.
Um, so as Terry said, we're looking at 4.25 million per year, non-recurring for five years. This is a 37% increase over the last referendum's amount of 3.093 million. This projection that you see in front of you was made using the Baird School Analytics Model in conjunction with one of their analysts. So I had a lot of help here from a very experienced business official. So, in creating this projection, there were a few assumptions that we made. The first was that future salary increases in the district would be 2%. Health insurance increases would be 6%. We would see 3% property valuation increases. We would have 5% transportation increases, and then 4% utility increases over the next five years. Those are pretty in-the-middle assumptions compared to what other districts would do. So, in this, in this model, I want you to look at that middle section there with the surplus and deficit line. So it would be the bold in black, and then you'll see the three red numbers at the end. The way I tried to structure this was similar to the previous referendum, where you start the first couple of years in the black, and then that third year kind of breaking even, and then the next two years in the red. Uh, so as you can see, this, this 4.25 million does meet, meet that requirement. And then at the bottom, you'll see the impact for taxpayers at mill rate. So we start at 5.34, and it decreases about 10 cents every year until, in the final year, we're at 4.9. Just for some historical reference, last year's mill rate was 5.41. So even with this referendum, the mill rate would not be higher than it was last year. And then the last thing I want you to look at is below that surplus and deficit would just be the fund balance there. And you can see, obviously, with a surplus, we'd build up that fund balance a little bit in those first couple of years, and then we would rely on that fund balance those last two years. If you go to the next page, this is just a kind of breakdown of mill rates. The graph goes all the way back to 2004, the table goes back to 2012. And the way I created this graph was, the Three Lakes section is broken up into each referendum cycle. So you can kind of see where the mill rates started with those referendums and where they ended. And you can see that purple one at the end, you know, starts where below 2021 left off there. And then the black line on the top is just the state average to give you a little bit of reference as to how Three Lakes compares statewide. Any questions so far? Okay, the next page I don't have a whole lot to say about, but it's just a comparison of the mill rates of some surrounding districts. I just picked the closest ones to us. So you see Three Lakes, then we have Pines, Rhinelander, Cranston, and then again the state average, and I color-coded those at the bottom. You can see Three Lakes and Northland Pines do a great job of maximizing taxpayer money. They were much lower than those other two.
And they're still very close, and, you know, to me, that's important, that we're saying we're offering so many opportunities for our students, even though we're a small district, but yet we're keeping it within fiscal responsibility and making sure that we're not overgoing the tax burden on our district. I would call attention, just down the road, look at Rhinelander because we're getting close to almost double the mill rate. And that's 13, 20 miles, you know.
So then the next couple pages are just kind of giving you an idea of some of those other assumptions that I made. So I assume that our membership would be flat. The way the state revenue limit works is it's really based off a membership. And if you look at that graph since about 2013 onward, we've kind of been hovering around that 500-student mark. So in my assumptions, my projections, I just carried that forward. If we see a membership increase, great, that would be wonderful, we'd get a little bit more money, but it looks like it would stay flat. Similarly, this next graph then shows the property valuation for the district over the past, well, 32 years, going back to 1990. And this property valuation is really important because it determines the mill rate. So our levy is divided by this property valuation, and that determines the mill rate. So the more property valuation we have, the lower that mill rate will go because that tax burden is spread out among more money. So for my assumptions, I went with 3%, pretty conservative. If you look at the last three years, we're looking at about 7.5% over the last three years, but these past two years have been real outliers with a 9 and then a 12%. And I didn't want to rely on that going forward. So again, I want a little bit conservative and just planned on 3%. And you can kind of see that what's going on from 19 to 22 is mirroring a little bit what went from '05 to '08. And then you can see it kind of flattened off for a while. So if that happens, I don't want to be in a position where we promise a mill rate that doesn't come to be. And then, uh, the next one is just the open enrollment comparison, open enrollment in and out. And over the past eight years, we've been a positive district for all six, or for six of those eight. The only two that we were negative would be 2016 and 2022. As Terry said in last meeting, you know, we're going to look to really boost that open enrollment. So I went forward with us being a positive open enrollment district for my assumptions. And then the last three pages just give you some historical reference on the previous referendum that the district has done. Starting in 2007, the district started doing multi-year, non-recurring referendum. So those first two were three years, and then after that, we were at five-year referendum. And you can see the percent increase in that graph compared to the previous referendum. And then the last two pages are just that listed out, and you can see exactly what was listed on, on the ballot, what the actual wording was, and then by how many votes it passed or did not pass in the case of 2003. So any questions on my assumptions or just my projections in general?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I think the assumptions are, I think, neither one end of the spectrum or the other. I think they're right in the middle. And I think, I mean, none of us knows what's going to happen.
Right, yep, exactly.
But we still have to make some kind of a projection. And I think anyone looking at those numbers would say it's a pretty fair assessment of what could possibly happen. Okay. Anything else, Terry?
Well, within your board docs, there are several documents that Caleb shared with you to, you know, to look at and read through. I don't know that we need to go through everything because a lot of it is basically how the business is done and properly posting. It, it's important that we follow this to the letter of the law because it is dealing with, you know, a referendum, an election. And then the two, the resolution language, Mike will have in front of him. I think it's important that we read that out loud, and that, that's something we would have you sign off on. And Stacy sign if the board chooses to approve it. So my recommendation at this point is, I would ask if there's any other questions before we get into moving forward as if we're going to move on approving the 4.25 referendum.
No further questions at this point? None? Okay, all right. So, the documents that, let's see here. Do we have these here in order? Authorizing. Okay, so how much of this would you suggest that we read? That I read?
I think the first one that you had there.
Just this one here?
Yeah, I think that's the, the main language. And then with your approval this evening, after this has been discussed, we will move these documents out onto the public view on board docs, so they can read them closely.
Okay, so the document I have in my hand is a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $4,250,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. And it states, "Be it resolved by the school board of the school district of Three Lakes, Oneida, and Forest Counties in Wisconsin that the revenues included in the school district budget be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in Section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes by $4,250,000 per year, beginning with the 2023 through 2024 school year and ending with the 2027 through 2028 school year for non-recurring purposes consisting of operational expenses." So that's the documentation that would get signed should this gets approved. Okay, and this is for the next one? Okay. Are there any other further questions? Okay, is anyone prepared to make a motion for approval?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we propose a $4.25 million per year for five years of addition to our, our budget through, through election.
Could I ask you to state that as the agenda item?
Yeah, unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, all right. I can read it off to you?
Yeah, that would be fine with me.
All right. Looking for motion to approve a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $4,250,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Terry, second by Michelle. Any last questions, comments?
Yes, I would like to hear from Terry what the general game plan is going to be to get approval of, of the referendum from our taxpayers.
Certainly, Terry. After this first step is completed, then we will go ahead, Caleb and I will work on our public presentation materials and have Jen West help us with how we want to put that together and package that. We will be doing that through contact with our constituents, also through social media. I think we need to also do some paper, pencil, the old-fashioned, you know, get it in the, the mailbox so everybody has access to it. And then plan to have meetings held at the different town sites where we have informational meeting, can present our documents and our projections and our plan, our reasoning why, and do that during the month of October so it's fresh in the minds and people can get fully informed before the voting would take place November 8th on the ballot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Terry, as far as maintenance items go with the school, I mean, I know there's a laundry list of items that, you know, boiler system and all that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you feel comfortable, we all know prices have gone crazy on everything.
Yes.
Do you feel comfortable with, with the number?
I feel comfortable with the number, but I also feel it's very clear that we, we state this is maintaining what we have and planning within our budget. This is not saying, okay, we can take on some bigger projects, expansion type of projects, because it's, it's not meant for this. we can take on some bigger projects, expansion type of projects, because it's not meant for this. That would have to be a capital project. I do feel that we have enough budget saved through our general fund balance and good fiscal planning, that we have a cushion which we need to have in our, we are one of those few districts that our fund balance is high. It has to be because if we don't have success, I mean, in one year, we'd look like a completely different district or less. So the answer to that is yes, but I also think that we should be very prideful that we've been extremely fiscally responsible the past five and 10 and 15 years. But in the short time I've been here, I can see the work that's been put in. You would expect to see more of a deficit at this point, but we did have federal funding, one-time funding with the ARPA funds, the SIR funds, which we will never see again. Those monies are very tied to conditional use. So where you may see that we have saved some is I could bill some of the staff salaries, for instance, to some of that money, but that will not last. That's gone. So now we have to really be prepared for what we have available. So the answer is yes, we will be able to make, do, maintain. If something bigger should go wrong, I do have insurance for the district on these items. It's really important that we keep that up. But still, within the general plan that we do, we have to keep that in mind that, okay, the boilers are probably going to have to replace one. It's this amount of dollars that's on the budgeted plan that we're going to take care of. Did I answer that somewhat clearly?
Yep. Just wanted to make sure we could go. And just an added comment regarding fund balance. Looking back historically, we had much lower percentage in fund balance. And that cost the district money because there are definitely gap months in which expenses are, the school still has expenses, but we're not receiving any of the tax receipts. And so what we had to do was short-term borrowing. And, you know, years ago, you know, some of those years that we borrowed, we were able to do very efficiently. But as we all know, interest rates are going up as well. And so if we were to, for instance, draw down a fund balance, we would be back in a situation where we would have to do short-term borrowing again. And again, it's an additional expense that the district would have to incur. So there are definitely reasons for having the fund balance at the level that it is currently. And what this referendum amount would do is, I can see with the projections, it would hold that fund balance fairly consistent to what we are today. Is that correct?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? All right. I will call it to a vote. All those in favor of the resolution signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes by zero. All right, and thank you for all the work that's gone into it thus far.
We're just beginning.
We're just beginning. All right, so next, we have consider a resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $4,250,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. All right, so this here is a motion to seek approval to pose the question to the electorate. And this here date would be November 8th, that is correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And we have, I'm just looking for the exact wording on the ballot.
It's in there.
Yeah, it's Exhibit B.
It's Exhibit B. Okay. Can I read that? Okay, so we have a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $4,250,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. Be it resolved by the school board of the school district of Three Lakes, Oneida, and Forest Counties, Wisconsin, that the revenues included in the school district budget be authorized to exceed the revenue limits specified in Section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes by $4,250,000 per year, beginning with the 2023 through 2024 school year and ending with the 2027 through 2028 school year for non-recurring purposes consisting of operational expenses. And then the actual question is almost exactly the same with just a few wording changes. So and then the answer, or I guess the electorate has an option to vote yes or no. So. So that's what we're seeking approval for, to get this in front of the electorate. It's really their votes, right?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of a resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $4,250,000 per year for five years for non-recurring purposes.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Would anybody have any further questions? Comments? Hearing none, I will call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes by zero. All right, very good. So the question we put for, to the electorate, and prior to that, we will get the information out.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so next, we have consider approval of the Safe Return Continuity Plan and Blue J. Return Plan Fall 2022 update.
All right, I have included for your viewing, if you remember, part of the SIR III funding requirements last year was that a separate documentation had to be created. And that was based on the DPI and Department of Health Services guidelines that we filled out and basically posted to our public, this is what we're doing to make sure school stays in school and we're taking precautions as needed. In addition to that, since the beginning of COVID, we've had our own local district return plan, and that has been updated for the fall season. Jen and I met August 3rd, I think it was, that we did the updates. But because we wanted to get that information out there, knowing that it was going to be talked about tonight and, of course, reviewed, revised, but so people have questions answered if they, you know, so wanted to check that information out. Since I got this information to you, the Department of Health Services from the state has actually released more information, and they have loosened significantly all of the mitigation practices that we were held to so closely, not even just a year ago. So what part of our SIR funding is to make sure that we have these documents posted for our public to see, and then I file it with DPI, and then we review it every six months or I update it. And so you have those two documents in front of you to take a look at.
Okay. All right, so which one do you want to start with?
Let's start with the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan. And I say that because this is tied to the SIR III funding, and this is a requirement by the state. Within this document, you saw this a year ago, and we have updated it, this will be the third time. There are some changes that have been made. I would say if you would go ahead and move to page two, Maintaining Health and Safety, where it's written in blue, that's what I have provided with, maybe yours isn't in color, but it's on page two. That's where it talks about what our instruction looks like. It's five days per week, face-to-face instructional model. And then we adhere to the following safety protocols. And listed out basically what we've taken from CDC guidelines and what we are doing as a practice listed here, the full vaccination of those who are eligible, suggestions, masking for those who are not fully vaccinated, appropriate hygiene practices, including proper and frequent hand washing, sanitizing stations throughout the building, stay at home when exhibiting symptoms of illness or of having a fever, and then testing for COVID-19 should symptoms be present. And the provide free onsite COVID testing for students, staff, and personnel, that has since changed. We, like I said, had updated this on the 3rd, and it came to be that it was not going to be the same providers. We were going to have a vendor if they figured it out through Milwaukee, if there was funding. And I received many pages of guidelines, what we would have to do as a district. When we put that onsite testing in place, it was because getting tests were virtually impossible. You couldn't even get them at the drugstore, the pharmacy, the health departments, and those are now readily available. They have since, within the last 10 days, released another option. Should we be interested, and I have to do the reading of the fine print, we could ascertain free home testing kits, but I would want to find out what the conditions are. At this point, there's been a very strong message released from DPI to the administrators in the school districts that has said the focus should be back, that schools, business, is education, and the Department of Health should be on health. So we have been given that permission to do what we need to do locally within reason. Contact tracing, contacts of classrooms, shutting down classrooms, that has all come to pass. That is something that, as a district locally, I've asked Jen to continue doing a weekly update, what our illness levels look like. We're not going to report X number of people have COVID or don't have COVID because the data would not even be accurate at this point. People aren't going in and getting tested. So and again, that's not the business of education. If we would see, just like any other illness, a spike in a classroom or a school, then we would be working with our health department and addressing that separately as an issue of a health-related issue, not just related to COVID.
So this last statement.
Will be coming off.
So we're going to be removing that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
And we'll update the date to today's date.
Okay.
Okay, going through the next sections. Did you want me to go through each one, or did you?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Because we got testing at the bottom of that first paragraph too that we.
Jen, I thought we took that off already.
I know we did too. Is this, that's what I'm looking at, you know?
I'm wondering if this is the.
Before we made the modifications, which I can check here.
Yeah. I think you have an old copy in front of you because we've already taken this off for our updates. If you go on the website.
I just, okay.
Yeah, so this one was talking again about our five days a week learning plan, that we have Chromebooks, that we are prepared if we should have to go to off-site education again. That's something that many districts had to deal with.
What page is that?
I'm looking at page three now. It says on the third paragraph, the district had, last line, the district has opened an onsite COVID-19 testing facility.
It's on the one that we updated, so I must have missed that.
Okay, that needs to come on. So that line would come off.
So the last sentence.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes I feel like I swear. I swear. I feel like I took that off somewhere. We'll just look at it and check it.
Okay.
Okay, perfect.
Universal and correct wearing of masks. We have our statement that acknowledges that face coverings and masks are optional and will be an individual decision. All staff and students will be supported regardless of their decision to wear or not wear masks. And then, if you recall, until March or April, it was required that masks were worn on public transportation. That is no longer in effect. So now on buses, vans, school transportation, they are not required. They are an option. Modifying facilities, that remains the same as it had been. We haven't moved back in a lot of furniture. We've, you know, when we did streamline for cleaning and such, we've left it that way. So there's no changes there.
Yeah, so one and five, it's on ours, it still shows about the onsite testing.
Okay, page five, Jen, the diagnostic and screening testing. We have to make sure that's taken off too.
I'm sorry, I wonder if I loaded the wrong PDF.
I, we sat together, we did this, that's why I'm. Yes, we have to get that updated, which we have it ready to go. It can be immediate.
Okay.
And then this is a recap of who was eligible for vaccinations, that we did support that with our staff. That just doesn't change. That's the historical. We continue to work with Oneida County and Vilas County. We are not going to have the weekly meetings at this point. Those are going to be more of a monthly or as-needed basis.
Terry, back on page three, you talked about that too. Is that something that you want to amend also in that last paragraph?
It doesn't say weekly, does it?
No.
It says regularly.
No, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I think that's okay because we are going to continue to meet, you know, at least monthly.
Okay.
And then page six, continuity of services. This continues as we have had in place since this past school year. So we'll make sure that we get that updated PDF out right away. Again, this is more of a tie to the funding and the grants. I would refer people who have questions to our Blue J. Return Plan for the more immediate response to what we're doing.
So both of these will be the post, correct?
Mm-hmm.
They are. They're posted under the family section of the website. So there's a whole SIR's page describing SIR's links to all of these documents.
I know you had some suggestions, like.
We could go through the Blue J. Return Plan and then we'll circle back.
Okay. Okay, so as we updated the Blue J. Return Plan, as Fall 2022 begins, our goals remain the same, to provide a safe and healthy environment. For all Three Lakes School District students and staff, we believe the Three Lakes School District educational programming is at its best when the students receive five-day onsite learning. Three Lakes School District continues to work with local health officials to monitor local health conditions. We remain flexible and responsive as we work to achieve a full school year of. a full school year of onsite instruction. And then within the subsections, maintaining a safe and healthy school environment. Based on the recommendations of the CDC, WIAA, and local health officials, the following preventative measures are encouraged. Full vaccination of those who are eligible, masking based on community risk levels, appropriate hygiene practices, and physical distancing. Did you want to add something to that?
My suggestion would be on this paragraph here should state exactly the same as what is on page two of the previous document.
Okay.
As they both start off almost identical. And I think just so they both say the same thing. But the one item that I would change, because it says two different things here. On the previous document, it says masking for those who are not fully vaccinated. On the Blue Jay Return Plan, it says masking based on community risk levels. My suggestion would be to use the masking based on community risk levels rather than the previous statement.
Sure.
Because I think it's best if we don't try to segregate.
Okay.
Identify people by mask-wearing or not. Again, that's an individual decision. And so I liked the masking based on community risk levels as stated in the Blue Jay Return Plan. But just that those paragraphs should be the same.
Okay. Did I make that change? Okay, vaccinations. While vaccination for those who are eligible is encouraged, the district recognizes that vaccination is an individual decision. Anything on that? When to stay home? Students and staff should stay home when exhibiting any COVID symptoms. And then face coverings or masks. Face coverings and masks are optional and will be an individual decision. All staff and students will be supported regardless of their decision to wear or not wear masks. And then reporting and communication. We will put them in a, with the weekly parent e-newsletters. We will update again. We have on here, parents will be contacted as situations warrant, such as in an exposure situation. But that has actually changed. So I would ask your input on that. Would you want us to continue that? Or are you more comfortable with us going back to the old established protocol of if it is pertinent in a classroom, then we would? Because we're not contact tracing. It wouldn't be the intention to contact parents every time there's a possible case. That's not required anymore.
It'd be like the old days where if there was a percentage and the health department said, you need to shut down, or.
Yeah. But are you comfortable with that? Because that's going to be more of a switch back. It's a switch back to the past. But we've tried to be very informative as much as we can be.
I was caught up on the other page, so I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at.
Recording for communication. Okay.
Personally, I'm indifferent. But I know that there is a portion of the community that would like to know. Is there any reason we possibly create a list of those that would want to be informed by class? I mean, I know it's a little bit of administrative task.
Each parent, you mean?
If somebody.
Would you want to know or not know?
Well, just, you just have the ones that do specifically want to know, submit something to the school.
Mm-hmm. I would say we'd have to do it the same for everybody. Either we go with the new, the e-newsletter as we have. Like I said, if we thought that there was a situation, for instance, in a classroom where we're looking and saying, okay, we've, we're seeing that there's three or four cases, then we would, I believe, notify it. But the days that we think there might be possibly an exposure, contacting everybody would be gone.
Okay, I understand. I, okay. I was at the, I was thinking that there was a case, not that there might be a case. Okay, I got you.
Yeah.
Yeah. Retract my statement.
Okay, so we're all right with that one then?
Hmm? I'm just going to go back. That's where I was caught up here. When to stay at home? Students and staff should stay at home when exhibiting, and then in this paragraph here, when exhibiting symptoms of illness. Because this is not just really a COVID document.
True.
So.
To take up COVID and say symptoms of illness.
Yep.
I would agree, I kind of got stuck on that too.
Yeah. That, that is more accurate.
All right.
Now, on this back page, this is directly from the CDC guidelines as they have been updated. So this isn't our language. This is just to be helpful as a resource.
It says guidelines, so. Because we're not going to enforce, you're not going to. Yeah.
These are what changed too, Terry? Are these what changed some as well? I mean, do we need to update the date and everything?
Yeah, we will double-check it.
Okay.
It was accurate on August 3rd. But since we're going back to it, we will pull the most latest.
Very good. Anything else to add, Terry?
No, I just included the DPI infection and mitigation measure plan. So in case you wanted to see what the state had put out.
Mm-hmm. Yep, informational. But these are the two documents that are going to be posted on the website.
Correct.
All right, and those are the two documents that we are seeking approval on. The Safety, Safe Return to In-Person Instruction Continuity of Services Plan and the Blue Jay Return Plan for Fall 22. Anybody prepared to make a motion?
One last question, if I can. On the Safe Return to In-Person Continuity, very bottom of page four into page five, Diagnostic and Screening. Is there any reason we want to put in there the at-home testing kits? It references medical provider, local pharmacy, and/or health department clinics.
We can.
You don't have to, I'm just curious. Just with them being readily available at this point.
With they are, yes. I would suggest that, because these are suggestions, I think that that would be appropriate. Local pharmacy, at-home test kits, or health department clinics. Before the hangup was debating the accuracy, if it was at home or somewhere else, that has since not become the focal point anymore.
That's kind of why I figured that.
I'll make an, I'll make a motion to approve the Safe Return Continuity Plan and the Blue Jay Return Plan for the Fall 2022 as presented with the updates discussed.
Second.
Okay, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed? None heard, motion passes five to zero. Very good. And thank you for all the work that's been put into this. And.
We have something to work from, so that helps.
Yeah. Moving forward, right?
Right.
It's a good thing. Okay, so. All right, so next we go to the Community Survey Report.
Okay, and on the report.
Just going to ask a quick question. We don't have another laptop or book. You've got one there that you're not using? Mine decided to take a rest.
I'm having trouble pulling up our document here.
You can start in.
Yeah, it's a weird.
Yeah, download.
MHTML.
Yeah.
If you just, I don't know if you guys get the option. If I, I can open up in the browser, it opens. If you just select edge or chrome against.
It's a download, yeah, once it downloads.
Yeah, oh. I don't know why that's happening. Okay. I'm just going to pull it up as a regular document. Okay, so I'm going to begin with this. It is posted in Board Dots, so people who would like to refer to it, I decided not to put it up because we talked about it at length with our board retreat. And then this is open to public access, so they can see what the results were. We had 191 responses. And we had a fairly good cross-section of people who did answer, which was nice to see. On the first question here, we asked, what was your relationship to the Three Lakes School District? And the biggest bulk, of course, is parents. Seventy-eight point eight percent were the parents. And then we had community and staff making up the rest of the major people represented. And then we asked the age group too. So this was the demographics that we were looking at. And we found that the biggest group came in at 36 to 45, again, parent age. We had some, the 46 to 55-year-olds, we had 25.8%. And then we had 25 to 35-year-olds at 16.3%. And then we asked this question specifically because we were very interested in wanting to know how long you've been living in or open and rolling to the district. And I thought this was interesting because it was a little bit surprising to me. I thought there'd be a much bigger chunk of more than 20 years. And that was the biggest group at 35.6%. But we also had a pretty nice representation across the board, less than five years at 20% and five to 10 years at 25% and 11 to 20 years at 20%. So that's, again, a pretty nice cross-section of people and their years of being connected to the district. It's not just the elderly retired or the brand-new parents. Then we got into perceptions. This survey was truly a lot about perceptions because we wanted to figure out what people were thinking about us as a district. So in the time you've been here or open enrolled, how has the quality of education changed? Again, the quality has stayed the same, brought in 44%. The quality has improved, brought in 27.2%. And then we had the quality of education has declined 17.8% and no opinion, 11%. Again, not based on data, based on perception. Questions so far or comments? Okay, then we tried to look at the quality of the curriculum, perception-wise, again, at the district level. And we had 12.2% felt it was highly effective. Students are well-prepared for the next step. We had over 50% that felt that it's effective. Students are prepared for the next level. And then 27% felt that it's somewhat effective. Students are mostly ready to meet grade-level expectations. Some felt not effective. We did have a couple of responses there, 4.2%. And does not apply to me. And we don't know what that's based on. How would you rate the quality of curriculum at Three Lakes Elementary? Highly effective, 9.5%. Effective, 42%. Somewhat effective, 14.7%.
I just lost Terry.
We did?
I think we might have.
Yeah.
The only green light that was on was gone.
One not registered.
Terry, you're not there, are you?
Did you lose the whole phone connection or just?
I think it was the whole phone. Mic is it down? You got something? I didn't touch it. You might have to start over, you might have to start over.
Hello?
Hey, Terry. Looks like we lost you.
Yeah, I'm back.
Yeah. Very good.
Okay, now we're looking at the quality, the perception of the quality of the curriculum taught at Sugar Camp. This was a bigger chunk of 57.9% said it does not apply to me. Remember, we're asking, you know, as a district questionnaire. Highly effective, 12%, 12.6%. Effective, 22.1%. And then somewhat effective, 6.3%. We've talked about digging deeper in by pulling these numbers of it does not apply to me to see what the actual percentages would equate to being. But the purpose of this was for us to get an idea of what the perceptions are. We're not trying to drill down to the point of identification. We just want to have what I would say is the vibe or the trend. Overall quality at the junior high, again, we had, does not apply to me, was 34.6%. But effective, 36.6% felt it was effective. And the next biggest group felt it was somewhat effective at 21% and then highly effective at 5.8%. And then how do you rate the overall curriculum of the high school? 35% does not apply. But we had 31.9% effective. We had 20.4% somewhat effective and 8% highly effective. Questions on that before I go into the report card? All right, then we really were interested in how much information our public gains from the Wisconsin Department of Instruction school report cards. And we asked first, are you aware of these reports? And we found, to my surprise pleasantly, that 77.5% said yes. And 22.5% said no. So more were informed than not. And then we asked, have the report cards affected how you view Three Lakes School District? The largest percentage was no, 62.6%. Twenty-two, or, yeah, 22.6% said, yes, it does. And 14.7 said, it doesn't apply to me. Again, perceptions. We won't go through the comments here, but there were several comments left. This was one of the few areas that we did open up to express your thoughts, your ideas. We saw comments from, yes, it impacted me in my decision-making for my family or to moving into a district to, no, I don't believe that report card should be the basis of decisions being made about the school district. So it's interesting to see just some of the thoughts. But again, when you have an open forum opportunity, you're going to see many variety of comments, so just gives you a feel. Then within the past 12 months, have you read online reviews of the Three Lakes School District? Eighty-two percent said no, 18% said yes. And then if yes, where have you seen reviews of our district? It looks like Google and Zillow were two of the bigger areas. Niche was also listed, Realtor.com, and then a smattering of great schools or Facebook groups. And then at Three Lakes High School. And then at Three Lakes High School, we offer many opportunities for students to personalize their education. Please check if you're aware of the following programs. And yes, I'm aware, was blue, and no, I didn't know about this. We found that, yes, there are a lot of people who are aware of the independent study courses. It drops a little bit when we get into the dual-credit opportunities. More are aware than not aware, but, you know, it's a little different. Apprenticeships are more, or mentorships, internships, they are closer yet. And then local business partnerships are almost the same. So it really speaks to what we've been trying to do the last couple of years with our planning, that we're trying to get more information out there about what is happening in place and available at the Three Lakes High School. This is an area that I really plan to focus some heavy attention on when we're doing our promotional of our district, our branding of our district, and what a small school can still offer. Ryan is not here this evening, he is actually attending a conference that I asked him to attend. And he made some really good points at our meeting last week that, you know, in just last year, we grew our student enrollment in all of these areas significantly. Probably more last year than had been in almost ever, definitely pre-COVID. And that's because we're able to give more attention to that, and we're really trying to reach that individualized interest of the students. Comments on that?
Most notably, the school-to-work program. We've been involved a little bit, and we've reached out to other districts as well. And I'm speaking as far as our business. But I will say that what we have as far as the school-to-work program here in Three Lakes is definitely a well-structured, well-defined, well-delivered program. And so, yeah, we're doing well in that regard.
That's something we should.
The programs there will just let people know that it's there. Yep.
And then we talked about co-curriculars. Are you satisfied with the co-curricular activities? The majority, yes. There was a percentage, fifteen percent, that said no. And then eleven percent said it doesn't apply. Communication, we were interested in how information is received. A lot of people get it from the Vilas County News Review. I found that probably, probably even though it doesn't compare necessarily to social media or Facebook, I think we're still a community that really relies on the local newspaper, that hand-in-copy or the electronic version. It tells me that we wanna keep that method of communication open. Yes, Carrie, we wanna keep rolling. We also talked about the local Channel Twelve or local television. Forty-one percent use that, but as I had expressed, although we try to maintain a relationship with Channel Twelve, we also have expanded to Channel Nine and Channel Seven. We try to get their reporters involved with us as well. Jen has a good contact in Channel Nine. And we found that if we want to make contact or discuss a story, they're very responsive. And then do you follow Three Lakes School District on social media? Yes, maybe three point eight percent. And no was about sixteen percent. And then we asked about our parent electronic newsletter. Do you read the Blue Jay Buzz or the Robin Report? And yes, always, was sixty-two point six percent. And sometimes was twenty-two percent. And I do not receive the newsletter, is fourteen point two percent. And then there was just a little tiny sliver, one percent of no, never. It made my question here, I don't know, do we somehow expand? Would there be an interest to sign up for the newsletter to somebody who's not a parent or outside? I don't know that we say yes or no. But I think maybe we've got a group of grandparents or people in the community that would really like to see just what's happening. I think they're very well-done, I think they're very warm and inviting. And maybe that's an area now as we're planning ahead that we can focus some time on. And then we asked about communication overall, one being poor, ten being awesome. With district communication, it varies, most of it falls at the seven, and then it jumps up into eight, nine, and ten. So that's a pretty good, pretty good response. We went into asking our parents about our report cards and online grading systems. Do they give you enough information? And fifty-nine point three percent said yes, and twenty-one percent said no. And that would be something that we would like to find out a little bit more about. Do you follow our YouTube channel? Yes, twenty, or twelve percent. And no, that was fifty-seven percent. And then I didn't know that you had a YouTube channel, it's thirty point four percent. So that's an area that we can do some more promoting. And then we asked about the Board of Education. Did you know that the meetings are recorded? And I was surprised, I thought this would be a higher number. But thirty percent, yes, and almost seventy percent, no. Questions and comments on that?
We're not drawing a crowd, huh?
No. We looked at the facilities, asked some specific questions about that. Mainly, have you visited, have you been indoors, have you seen them? And asked from daily to once a week up to, I have not been in the facilities at all this past year. And it's kind of across the board. We have almost thirteen percent that are there daily. We have a big chunk, thirty percent, at least once a week. And then another twenty-two percent that said, once a month. Another twenty-four percent, right around, a few times a year. Then we asked about the perception, again, of the conditions of our outdoor facilities. Came in pretty heavy, eight, nine, and ten. So that was on the positive end. And then we asked specifically about the buildings. Rate the condition of the junior high and high school building, one being poor and ten being excellent. This was a little bit, you know, more across the board. We start out, there's a few responses with the five and six. We have the biggest showing at eight and nine, but not as high as we saw with the district facilities. And then the Three Lakes Elementary Building ranked a little bit higher, majority thirty-two point six percent, eight. And then we had nine and ten. And then we asked about the conditions of our gyms. And those came in pretty high, starting at seven with twelve percent. But eight, nine, and ten, twenty-four percent, thirty percent, twenty-five percent. So our public perceives our gyms and the upkeep is being, I think, pretty well-cared-for. And then the conditions of Sugar Camp with one being poor to ten being excellent. This was lower ratings, it starts at the lower end of the scale. There's some fours and fives, goes up to eight was the highest at twenty-three percent, and drops back down. This was sent out prior to the completion of some of the projects that were done at Sugar Camp this summer. We'd be really interested in finding out, you know, a more specific to the facility after some of these updates were done. Because I think this might be skewed in the negative, where folks have been waiting for a playground for a while, and now it's here. And then do you feel the facilities are up to date? Fifty-three percent, yes. Twenty percent, no. And then twenty-six percent, maybe. And this was, again, another place where people could make comments. Some of the comments don't really fit the question because there's a place to make a comment. But again, you just have to read them with kind of an open mind and see what thoughts are out there, go from there. Questions or comments on that?
None here.
Okay, and then we went into safety. Do you feel this district is a safe place? Eighty point five percent said yes. And fifteen point eight percent said somewhat. We didn't see a no in that area. And do you feel that our building entrances are safe and secure? Seventy-two point eight percent, yes. We did have four point two percent say no. And nine, almost twenty percent, say somewhat. We asked if they knew that our facilities were monitored by security cameras, and the answer was yes there, at eighty-seven point four percent. And then there was the opportunity to leave some comments there also about safety concerns with twenty-three responses. Overall, I felt the survey gave us a real good feel for where people are getting their information from, whether it's electronic media, social media, newspaper. And it also gave us an idea of where perceptions are falling.
This questionnaire, this survey, this was something that you had put together here. We didn't contract with an outside entity, correct?
Right. We took the base, the past surveys that have been done with the district and used some of their questions, but then we steered it towards the information that we were really seeking.
In the back of my mind, is this something we send out every couple of years or something to kind of gauge progress in certain areas?
I think there's plenty of room for, there's potential for us to do whatever information we want. Like if there's an area on there that you wanna explore, it's not hard to set up something like this. So it's at our fingertips. You don't wanna overpull people.
Correct.
So, you know, just be mindful of that. But I think, you know, getting our public opinion is an important piece. So, yeah, something to keep in mind, a tool.
Yeah. Applaud all the work that was put into it. You built this in-house, so we didn't have to solicit an outside entity to do this. So, efficient to the core, right? Yeah, 'cause right now, I mean, has it really been five years since we did? It's been that long, hasn't it?
We did the polling before we came back from COVID, so we did a survey at that point.
That's right.
A lot of perceptions and safety concerns. So we use the same format, then it was just Google ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so as far as this information here, might be something we do more than just every five years, maybe every couple. I agree, we don't need to do something, you know.
And I think maybe if we want some specific information, for instance, like our facilities, when we're talking about where we wanna go with that, have it more geared to the opportunity to respond to that specifically, buildings, whether it's Sugar Camp or Three Lakes, whether it's the outdoor grounds. So we get a better feel for where people's minds are at.
Very good. Thanks for going through that. Any other questions or comments on the survey? All right, we'll move on to update from the Long Range Plan District Goals Meeting.
Okay, well, I'm gonna ask you first about how in-depth you would like me to go because you were all there. I can, I can keep it quite brief. And just make a couple of comments here, or I can go line by line if you'd like to.
Yeah, I, no, I think a brief overview is probably fine, 'cause as you stated.
That'd be great. Well, I just wanna say that, starting with looking at the past plan, it was an effective exercise, I felt, because something I had heard and in preparing is that perhaps some things maybe were seen as being accomplished or crossed off because they were done, but we weren't quite sure where they were at. So in general, I'm just gonna talk to a couple of these areas. I'm looking at, the first one, create a communication plan, that was reached. Jen has done well with that, and now we're looking to go forward. We did discover in, when we talked through, that one area that we feel is not being consistently met was communication with our co-curricular or extracurriculars. That is not necessarily a communication output situation that I would tie to Jen. We see that more as an internal area that we need to work at. And I thought that was a really important point that kind of rose to the top as we went through. Looking a little bit further down, like goal two C. We talked about this too tied to co-curriculars, that there would be a standard format for advisors and coaches to communicate. And we determined that that really has not been done, but a practice and something that we can do better. So that helped shape our thinking that way. We got into then talking about developing markets, marketing strategies to disseminate information. This is an area that we definitely wanna continue to grow. We have got a great basis. I hear so much positive, and it comes back to what Jen does in so many different ways and, you know, how the district is communicating the positives. But really, where we wanna go now is getting our message, not just to our local people, but as we put in our notes, the broader world, you know? Get it more out there globally, because there are people who are moving all the time and making decisions as to where they would like to be. And Three Lakes has a lot to offer, a lot of what I would say are benefits that you might not even think about until you look at what those can be in a small town for the big offerings. So that rose to the top is something that I really wanna be focused on. Then we talked about some of our goals, that we don't wanna make them as separate anymore. I'm looking at curriculum and instruction now. Some things are just embedded now into what we do as daily practice. So we're going to continue working on bringing that relative and relevant and authentic experiences to our students. Don't necessarily need to name them out in a document here, but in how we deliver that is seen through then multiple options of assessment. So that's where my team and I are going to be working with specific ways to measure that and bringing that back to you. We looked a little bit further into the increasing of academic offerings, which has been happening. It's ongoing, it's best practice. We did say that the standalone of standards-based grading needed to be removed because that wasn't pertinent to what we're doing and who we are anymore. We don't focus on the grading as much as the teaching and learning, and that's where the assessment reflects that. And we all agreed that that was something that we needed to move away from. And then I'm going to, we had investigated the possibility of development of the high-quality early childhood. Well, that's in place, it's implemented, and we're going to continue to grow that. Really, the connections and outreach is with our youngest families from the very early on is something we wanna keep talking about. And we decided as a team that it was time to move away from the past language of cultural change, because that was an initiative that happened several years ago, and that change did happen. So now when we're talking about cultural change, it's not a change. We wanna look at it now as our, our school, what we do, you know, is actually school engagement. So we're gonna be redefining that a little bit better. Technology is not an area that we need to have standing alone. It was antiquated, 'cause when this was put in place, it was still about teaching teachers how to increase their abilities to offer technology in curriculum. And they have gone above and beyond, and that's just a natural part of what we do now. So we're taking that section out. And then looking at including some of the other areas under technology, like the engineer, support the engineer and design process, that goes into the regular curriculum. So we're going to embed that where appropriately belongs. And so that's a brief overview of that. Questions or comments on that?
None here.
Then looking forward, I want to. Then we got into our meeting about where we wanna go. And we identified our topics, our main areas of focus. And I just prepared a little bit of. And I've just prepared a little bit of, of a statement here for a few comments, just so I can encapsulate it without getting too, too broad. But I just stated that we had met as a planning team on August 3rd, and we began the, in preparation, the group reviewed the past five years, and we also discussed the goals that were accomplished, ongoing, or no longer pertinent, as I just shared with you. And then we focused our time and attention on this community survey results, and we found that this gave us a better understanding of the perceptions of our respondents, and I felt that we found some deep, rich conversation that helped us shape where we're going forward, and we were able to identify some key areas or patterns to be considered in the long-range process. The three areas that we identified for our priority goals included the teaching and learning, the school culture, and innovative communication connections. And these areas were then reviewed by the administrative team last month, this past Monday, so we could start working a little bit more deeply into what we want to make as our appropriately prioritized and sequenced approach to what that will look like. So those are the big topics. We're going to try to stay with the three. You get too big and broad, then, you know, you lose sight. Underneath teaching and learning, which would have been formerly like your curriculum and instruction, we decided that it was really important that the goals that keep coming up are still achieved, but we want to take a step back. We feel like we have to define what personalized or what we're calling also individualized learning is, because although it's a district goal, it's a district initiative plan that we're working forward with, it looks a little differently at the different levels. For instance, at the elementary level, you're not going to have an individualized career plan for a first grader, but you are going to have an individualized plan for their reading or math needs, and we're already doing that, and that's what we want to keep growing. Whereas at the junior high level, we, the team discussed that we want it to really become more exploratory, and how does that work into our long-range planning? And then at the high school level, of course, it's more of the personalized learning, which goes into your career pathways or career clusters. So I, that's a little bit more than we had talked about that day, so I wanted you to know that that's our intention to define it. So we all know what we're talking about. Then under school culture, we decided that we're going to work on developing a common and respectful school culture. The, the team identified that we want to acknowledge individuality of the schools but, and increase school pride, but we also want to, in the same token, encourage student and staff-driven school spirit cohesion and involvement. So it's okay to be a Sugar Camp Robin and still be part of the Blue Jay family. We respect and honor that, but we, we see where the individual, you know, schools have their roles. And then within that area, we also are looking at developing a student-led mentorship program. So our high schoolers are maybe working with our junior high or our young ones, or maybe our junior high are working with our littles too, so they start feeling that connection across the district. And then in the third area, what we termed innovative communication connections, really, this is about building the authentic relationships, connecting with our citizens, you know, locally and far-reaching, going wide into our marketing outreach, and then we're going to work on our school-related and co-curricular communication procedures and protocols. So those are the big nutshells, and then we'll be bringing to you the specifics of how we are planning to accomplish that, make the measurable goals.
Very good. I thought there was great participation from many people at that planning meeting, and so you've got a lot of input, a lot of ideas, a lot of recommendations, suggestions, and we're basically looking, the board is going to be looking from you to compile all that information and come back to us, perhaps September or October, so that we can approve the five-year and the, and the annual district goals. And so there's a lot of, a lot of work. The five-year plan is always an extra amount of work. Unfortunately, you only have to do it once every five years, but it's, it's basically providing that outline for us to work out of for the next five years. And so, you know, this year is always a lot more burdensome than, than subsequent years, so. So, yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing the documents and moving forward and implementing a lot of the suggestions, ideas, so I thought it was, I thought it was great that, I love participation, and when you get input from a lot of people from, you know, many different buildings, I think that equates to something that you're going to have buy-in from a lot of different factions and people that will come together and see this as a group effort.
That's what it's about, yeah.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? All right, and that's it for you, Teri, on that one?
It is.
Very good. Next, we'll move to the seclusion and restraint report.
And I'm presenting this for Kerry Volk, who couldn't make it this evening, because we don't have anything reported. This is something that we're required to do. I included the document in your board docs in accordance with the 2011 Wisconsin Act 121. For 2C, I'm reporting the following one. There were zero incidents of seclusion and physical restraint in the Three Lakes School District for the 2020-2021 school year, and the total number of pupils who were involved in incidents of seclusion and physical restraint for the 2020-2021 school year was zero, and the number of students with disabilities who were involved in incidents of seclusion and physical restraint for the 2020-2021 school year was zero. And that is the extent of the report. This is a formal requirement. It's, it's something we would keep track of. I did want to mention that I will be looking at the policy that we have in place because it is an older policy, and Kerry and I are going to be addressing to make sure we're up to speed with any changes that have been made, but we are still meeting the letter of the intent. Any questions on that?
Just a question, and, you know, to see this once a year. Do we typically lag a year behind on this, the incidents?
Shouldn't it be 2021, 2022 school year? I was wondering about the dating myself.
Perhaps we should bring that back next month, because I'm reporting for what Kerry gave to me, and I can't answer that question.
Yeah, I just honestly don't remember if it's a, if it's a year lag or if that was meant to be 2021 through 2022.
I would imagine that's supposed to be current.
I think it's supposed to be current, but I would feel better about bringing it back to you, corrected?
Okay.
If that would be okay? It's, it's a report.
Yep.
It's not an action item, but it should be correct.
Right.
For you.
Was this submitted to anybody?
No, not yet.
Okay.
No, this is going to be submitted, yeah.
Okay.
You have to see it first.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess, in bringing that back for next month?
Yeah.
Just, so either yes, it legs, or no, it was meant to be?
Mm-hmm. I told her I'd handle it, and I didn't do very well for her, did I?
You read what was theirs. Very good. Okay, any other questions on that? Very good. Next, we have the state and federal annual notice posting report.
I just want to give you, for your awareness, that in the next week or two, that all of the current year updates will be under the legal notices on our website. Jen and I and Kerry will get together, and it's something we do every year. They're virtually the same, but that will be posted on the website.
Very good. Justin, you get to be up. How's that? School Forest Camp 3 update slash report.
Yes, did you bring your copy?
Yes.
Nice, you want to share that with? I've got three copies.
Yes, I don't need to see it. Or I guess we can, you can make one.
So what you're looking at is the paper copies of the preliminary plans that get a little bit more specific than what we've looked at here, delivered by Phil from MSA here about a week and a half ago?
August 3rd, I think it was.
Yeah, yeah. Big paper's good, means you're getting someone. Right, that's what I was going to say. It's, it's not a whole lot different than what you've seen before, it's just a little bit more specific. For me, and Josh, I get that page probably means a lot to you. For me personally, the good stuff starts about on page three. But go ahead and take your time to look at it if, if you want, but that's, that's some really...
So road cross-section in the first?
Yep.
Okay. All right. And then we get into erosion control blanket.
Talks about some of the specs of...
I don't really have much of that.
There's enough elevation change out there where this is going to go where there's going to be a share of it.
Think so?
Yeah. But not, not terribly bad.
Okay. All right, this little fence around the perimeter. Storm-tracking pad.
Tries to keep debris off the roadway as they pull in and out of construction site.
Oh, so this is just a temporary thing?
Right.
Okay, got it. Sidewalk detail, so if we would need sidewalk?
I believe the sidewalk that's referenced in there, you'll see it is...
Is that what was behind the?
It's, yeah, yeah.
Behind into the shot stations.
Where the building, where the building may be going to access in front of the... There's more blown-up detail of that coming down the line, Mike. The basic gist of what Phil shared with us is there's nothing new, dramatic, unexpected, so to speak. There is a shade more dirt that needs to be moved than what he originally thought when he first did a, a very cursory look at the site, and you'll see that on the very last page of this packet. It shows the grade, and basically the dirt has to be flipped from the north over to the south to get it to where we need it to be for parking lot and, and the trap range. And, and I guess as you're, as you're out there on, on the ground, you start to notice that, yeah, as you get into the blackberry rambles, you're, you're climbing a little bit. So that's, that's the gist of his, his meeting with us was, hey, we're going to have a little bit more dirt to move, what we originally expected, not something that was like, oh...
Sure.
Kind of neat in that side, that cross-section that you see on the very last page, that little groove in the middle is what they put in there for, to take care of water, so there's not water problems with the parking lot or the rain. If you go back now to, you'll, you'll see up, up closer, more, more detailed looks of what the parking lot and the spot where we intend to start out with, of the basic structure is going to look like, and then the, the page previous says what the trap fields will look like, the two that we're going to start out with. The process now, as Phil warned us, and I believe Teri could update that, we, we did get, where we're at now is the permitting process, and Phil warned us that they're a little bit behind with everything that gets permitted everywhere, like every place else in the world, right, that has to do anything, construction or contracting. But Teri did get confirmation from the Department of Natural Resources that we're in the hopper at least. What that means, I don't think they, they set any specific date or anything for, that we can expect them to be done, but at least the, Phil's done his part to get, get it in the hopper there. The next thing we can expect from Phil is a booklet of specific spec sheets, I guess, maybe, is that what you call them?
Yes.
That we could take to a contractor and say, hey, folks, here's what we, here's what we're looking to do, here's what we need. So we're getting there. Like Josh says, the bigger paper is, is better. Putting concepts onto something a little more specific. I intend to, and it's scheduled in the in-service schedule, to take staff that wants to go out, that's anxious to get out there, take a stroll on what the walking trails that we do have completed. We're, we're not, we're not punched all the way through to the west end just yet, but we do have the corner's marked there, so we know at least where the parking lot will stop. This part right in here, on the west end of the parking lot, going back into the north for a little bit here, that's some pretty thick stuff, and, and it will be a little bit slow going in there until we can get some, some of the equipment to help. Right now, we're doing, you know, it's basically by-hand stuff, but the, the other end on the north side of the loop is going pretty well. We'll, we'll have someplace for our teachers to take a walk and at least maybe get some ideas percolating.
Okay.
I, I wish, it's not going to happen, I wish we could have a parking lot there to pull a bus into the start of the school year, it's not quite going to get there, that's, that's reality. But Mr. Stotts took a trip out there last, last spring already, you know, it, it can be done. I, I worry about probably not with the littles without having a spot where you could pull in and get a part, a bus parked in, you know, off the road. Camp 2 road is not exactly super bus-friendly, but we could do it on a limited basis to start with, if people are super excited to get out there, as I know somewhere, so. We'll at least take them out there and take a look at what, what's available right now in the, in the here and now. So that's about where we're at.
Yeah.
That is where we're at.
Yep.
Making progress.
Forward, moving forward.
Yes, yes. Impatiently moving forward.
You know, this is something that will be here for the next generation, 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 right?
Yep.
So, yeah, so you're taking the time to do it right.
I hope so.
Very good. Thank you for that update. Any questions at all?
Hey, when, and I don't know if Teri's still on there, but as soon as we get our, our staff back, I intend to talk with both Jen and the, the folks down in the fab lab to get going on the site.
Yeah.
Need your design, and hopefully there, get some students involved, but I know you can talk if they can build a design.
Perfect.
Yep.
Very good. Teri, you'll have to stop in and take a look at the plans.
Yep.
Got it. Very good. Next, we have district-related positive happenings. School's about to begin.
It is, and we're ready.
Yeah.
Or not, here they come.
All right. We're all set and ready for that day to come, right, Stacy?
So I had one recently, Nicolay's, the, the folks, both instructor, the dean of the, that, that section of our Department of Nicolay, and Sarah Gruberall came in to meet with Ryan and I about our welding program moving forward, which is great, it's, it's taking off in terms of number of kids wanting to engage in that program, the competency-based program that we team up with Nicolay on. The really good news, the positive happening stuff, there, there was some bad news, and those of you who, who work in this sort of world know this, but the price of steel has doubled, almost tripled. That's rough when you buy in supplies for your, for your welding kids to work on. But the great news was, they, they had a little bit of, of an update on their, on Nicolay's end that they wanted to let us know. Our kids who complete the competency-based program here, plus two, one, two-one credit math courses that we can do, we can do either in the start college now, or potentially by second semester here in house with transcripted credit, if we can schedule, we have staff credential to...
We have staff credential to do it. It's just a matter of right now and the school year starting here very shortly, probably not enough time to get things going on either end in terms of our schedule and their, their approval process for, for transcripted credit. However, we can do the start college now, now. Okay, so, long story short, the kids who complete our, the, the Nicolay welding program here will, with those two one-credit math courses, can walk out of here with their welding certificate that you, they would need to go to Nicolay and enroll in their program for 18 months or sometimes two years. They're, they're going to have it when they're done here. That's beautiful.
And the buzz is already out there with the kids. Because after you came home from soccer, they're going to be saying, Mom! He was.
And that's a good credential to have in your pocket when you walk out.
Yeah, he was excited and it was like, that's awesome.
But just, just two class, two, two math, applied math courses that need to be taken. Plus obviously meeting all of the criteria-based requirements in the, in the welding program, so.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Information.
That's excellent.
So with a little bit of luck, we'll have some kids walk out of here in June with that in their, in their pocket. So that was good.
Yeah, great work, yeah.
I guess Sugar Camp's got their playground all set up, so. Thanks to Jack and all the guys from Three Lakes that came over and finished that. Looks really good. Keisha finished painting yesterday. She did the last gray on the very front of the building. So everything's painted, floor's in, playground's on. One shift's already sprung out.
Great.
Not if I have your way home, take a look. You have a better, all right?
Did you give it a test?
I hung from a couple things. I did not put on a slide. Pretty heavily weighted, so. Yeah, thanks, sixth grader.
Yeah.
Good stuff. All right, anybody else? All right, very good. Next, we go to WASB correspondence, anything there?
Yeah, I'm going to actually turn it over to Kerry because tomorrow registration for the January conference will be opening and we will need to know who's interested in attending. We want to get registered right away and get our rooms right away. So Kerry, do you want to give a brief update on what you need from us? I think it's basically if you want to attend.
The dates are January 18th through 28th, 2023 in Milwaukee. And the locker rooms opens tomorrow at the conference site. So if you think you want to go, I can make those real reservations. And if something happens and you need to cancel closer to the date, we can certainly take care of that. But we, I just, just to make reservations for everybody tomorrow or Friday so that we're right on the conference site instead of having to walk across the street. Because it's usually pretty nasty weather when you guys.
And they go very quickly.
They do go quickly.
Very good, you helped me in, so.
Yeah. And we know that Terry McCluskey will be there, so that's correct, right, Terry?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Help me in.
Okay. And that's what I have for correspondence.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, with that, we jump to adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. I don't even have to ask for a question. We can just vote. All those in favor signify by standing aye.
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 opposed, none heard, motion passes by a zero. Thank you everyone for your input and thanks for those that attended tonight. And yeah, let, let the school start again, right?